Evening and welcome to the March eighth, Walton City Council Regular Meeting. We had work sessions earlier this evening and we ended up a little earlier, which is a nice break. So let's go ahead and call the meeting in order and we have our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19. That right, Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've hit over 500,000 people have lost their lives in our country to COVID-19. And as new vaccines are coming online and people are still encouraged to be careful even after they've been vaccinated. Wear their masks socially distanced, wash your hands. Because the variants have already increased the amount of herd immunity that we anticipate that we're going to need. We think about and take a moment of silence for those whose lives we've lost, whose lives have been lost and those still suffering in many ways as a result of COVID-19. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. We haven't done the pledge of allegiance in a while because it's difficult to do in a Zoom environment because we all say at one time Zoom really messes it up. So I gave a technology challenge to our employee of the year Bates Russell to figure out how we can do the pledge of allegiance in a way that's both respectful and we just don't step over each other. So I'll turn it over to Bates.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have the pledge will come across the screen with the flag. There's no need to stand for the pledge. If you would just recite it quietly to yourself, if you are going to recite it out loud, please make sure your mics off before we do so. And then once it's over, we'll resume, the mayor can resume the meeting.
All right. Thanks Bates. That went very well. Thank you. All right. Next up is a public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on our agenda tonight. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone in this Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Or if you're at the poll center, you can also do it from there. If we have anyone at the poll center, Bates?
We do not have anyone at the poll center, Mayor, and I have not been text or chatted with by anyone in the meeting. So if they would like to speak, they should turn their camera on and wave their hand now.
Yep. I'm not seeing anybody yet. All right. Going once, going twice. All right. So then we're going to move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda are those items that are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like it removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda contains three items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the city council work session and regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Item two, consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals through 2021. And item number three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Tiny Wolf Brewing LLC. Would anybody like any of these items pulled from consent?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, second.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, I'll go through the roll. Councilor Hillier?
Aye.
Councilor Brooks?
Aye.
Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Pratt? Councilor Red?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye also. It's approved. Moving on, item number one under special reports is our quarterly financial report, second quarter fiscal year 2021. And I assume that is our illustrious Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. It is. I tried to pass it off to Bates since he is the employee of the year, but he wouldn't take it. So that's one demerit for him for next year's vote. I am Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here with the city. It's my pleasure to present to you the second quarter financial report. If I could share my screen here, I'll bring up the presentation. Hopefully, everybody can see the presentation and I'll go ahead and get started. Except I have to click on another thing. There we go. There are four items I'm going to present to you this evening. They are the fiscal year 2021 budget to actual numbers through the first half of the fiscal year. I will go into our quarterly investment report as required by our investment policy. And I did attach earlier today to the staff report, the actual report to you. I'm going to give you a little update, a kind of a recap of the CARES Act programs and the funding that we received under a number of the programs of the CARES Act funding. And then I will give you an update of where we are at with the fiscal year 2122 budget process. So let's talk about our revenues and expenditures. To start with the general fund. And you see a percentage wise, we are just about the, we're actually a little high. We are a little higher in the dollar amounts. But what those numbers are, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. Our assessed value went up, so our property tax revenues are increasing. We are trending higher in our franchise fees for the first six months of the year. Our liquor taxes are trending higher due to, that's one of the impacts we're seeing with the pandemic is more people are purchasing alcohol. And so our share of the liquor taxes are increasing. But we are seeing significant reductions in some of our categories and some of our light items. For example, our recreation programming revenues, obviously, we're not holding as many of our rec programming because we're not holding events, our sponsorship revenues are down. Obviously, people aren't traveling, so we know our transient lodging tax revenues are also down. And then with the declining in the interest rates, and I'll talk a little bit about our interest rates in the investment report, we are seeing a reduction from what we expected and budgeted in our investment earnings. Some of those reductions, especially in the recreation programming, in the events and so forth, do come with the reduction in expenditures. We're not holding the programs. We're not paying the temporary staff and purchasing the items we do to run those programs. So we are seeing some reductions in the expenditures also in the general fund. I really don't know at this point yet where we're going to net out at the bottom line as we go through the budget process. And as we get a little bit further into the fiscal year, we do some more analysis in the next couple of months. We'll have a feel for what our bottom line difference will look like. We do have strong reserves and so I'm confident that no matter how we end up as far as our revenues and expenditures for this current fiscal year, we will still end the year in a sound financial position. Some of the things we just don't know at this point are what were our rec programs look like going forward? When will travel ramp up? Our property taxes, what are those going to look like in the next year? And those are types of things that staff is working on right now as we're working through the budget process. I can say with property tax revenues this year, we are looking what I expected, that we would not see the large reduction based upon the values and so forth. I think we are seeing a little bit of a trend where people aren't paying everything upfront in November. Though our collections were really strong and not far off and really much track we've had in the past years through December. I, you know, I think that'll continue into next year and I anticipate, I don't anticipate we'll see a large change in our, in our property tax revenues going forward as well. So again, those are all things that we will look through and analyze as we put together the budget. On the expenditure side, we are also seeing, as I said, some of the the changes due to the programming's not being offered as well as some of the operating costs that we're not having to incur based upon the impacts of the pandemic. Other, another big change you'll see in this reduction of the amounts of revenue or expenditures. And you're going to see that in, in all these funds is in fiscal year 1920, we did the transfers of idle funds from those funds to the city services center project because we had current funds that paid for half that building. So in 1920, we had those transfers in the expenditure items. So obviously, we don't have that in the current year. And so that's why you'll see that the percentages this year are lower across the board in all those funds typically. Pretty much in all those different funds, that's the difference in the dollars that we're seeing. But moving on to the building fund, you'll see the revenues are down significantly, dollar wise and percentage wise. And I was talking to Chris Ragland, our building official about this, and it's a combination of things. One is the budget numbers were, I guess, for lack of a better term, I'd say it were aggressive. Aggressive in that where we're sitting today. As a year ago, when they were putting together the budgets, a little over a year ago, we saw that, you know, development was happening. We had some big projects that were in line to be happening, we thought, this fiscal year. And some of those were put on hold and so, so I think our budget was a little bit high to begin with based upon where we sit today, not necessarily where we sat a year ago. Some of those, a number of those bigger projects have been put on hold. Chris is starting to see a little bit of a couple of those that are starting, talking about starting back up. So we're hopeful that here in the near future, that dynamic will change. We are seeing less activity than we were anticipating in the building fund, but yet that, the activity that is occurring is also on the smaller scale projects. And so that has an impact on our revenues. Again, we do have reserve set up in that fund. So if this trend continues, you'll, you'll see that we are also trending a little low on the expenditure side. So I think, you know, we're, again, I'm not worried about that fund as a whole as we get through this fiscal year, but you are seeing the revenues down at this point through the year. In the road utility fund, you'll see that we're trending on the revenue side at 39%, exactly pretty much where we were a year ago. You'd expect this to be at 50% of the year. Which if you take out transfers for the vehicle license fees that we put both counties that we collect in the road operating fund and then we transfer into the road utility fund, we do that transfer at the end of the year. So you're not seeing those in the actual dollars at this point. Now, if I take that budgeted number out of both, of both years, we're right at 50, 51 and a half percent. So we are trending right where we expect to be on the road utility fund revenues. The expenditure side there, you'll see that that's a little different, a little lower, and that's based upon a timing of our pavement maintenance program. We are having more part of that program that'll be happening in the spring. And so you're seeing the, just the timing difference between last year's program and this year's program. On the road operating fund, you'll see the revenues are down. That's our state gas tax based upon as many people traveling, commuting to work and so forth. Our, our tax revenues on the state's gas tax are down 11%. The other piece of that revenue change is in the fiscal year 20, we had grant revenues for the Sagard Street sidewalk program that we received through Washington County and CDBG program as well as some monies that we received from Clackamas County for the maintenance on Orland Road or taking over that responsibility out on Orland Road. That was in 1920. Those again were one-time revenues that came in. On the expenditure side, the big difference there is on the capital project side. And that is largely due to that Sagard Street sidewalk program that was paid for in 1920. And of course, now we're not having that in 2021. Core area parking, we're not seeing a huge impact on the core area revenues this year. What you see that big difference right now and where we're at on the lower side in the actual for 2021 is the city is actually the largest payer into the core area parking district. And so we have not done the journal entry to move that payment from the general fund over into the core area parking fund. That's about $6,000. So that gets us real close to the budgeted amount. We are having more businesses that are making installment payments which are allowed under the ordinance. And so we're seeing that, again, that revenue recognition happening a little bit later than the first six months of the year. There are some businesses that are not operating anymore in the core area. But we also are seeing some new businesses that are moving into those, those places. So again, talking to staff, we're not anticipating that a huge impact and we think, and we will definitely get up to the budgeted number for 2021. In the water operating fund, you see a significant increase in the revenues. This is due to the increased consumption that we are having in, in water sales right now. Consumption is up 7.8% over the same six month period in the last fiscal year. Largely, I believe that that is due to the number of people that are home all day instead of being at work. We're seeing obviously a big change in the consumption patterns there. I would anticipate that to continue going forward. How long that'll continue going forward, you know, with everything else of the pandemic, it's anybody's guess. But I think we'll see definitely on the short term that we'll continue to see consumption numbers increase on the revenue side, the water side. On the sewer fund, you'll see the dollars are pretty much close. And that's because we did not do a rate increase this year. So that's where you'll see the impact on the dollar wise of the, why we're trending pretty much right on. The percentage is down a little bit because if you recall, we budgeted, I did back off some of the proposed rate increase when we put the budget together. But since council made the decision to hold off on a rate increase until July 1st, we did not adjust that revenue budget. So that's why the percentage is a little bit lower. But if you look at the dollars, we're trending right even with the last six years or six, six years, the last six months of last year as well. So moving on to the, to the investment report, as of December 31st, we had $84.2 million invested in our total portfolio, which is our bond proceeds along with all the rest of our general all across our other funds, the idle funds are, we are earning a 1.031% on these funds, which earns about a quarter of a million dollars over the the, over the quarter. So we're earning about a quarter million dollars over that, that quarter. One compliance issue was noted in, in here and what that is related to is we invest with the state local government investment pool. The limit on that is I believe it's $54 million you can have in that fund. And we are up close to that limit at a normal time and we invest some money there, we invest remaining funds, we diversify our portfolio with, it's typical in this quarter each year because you have property tax revenues that'll come in and that's our big hit or a big amount of revenue that comes in in November. We don't know exactly what day that's going to hit. We're going to get those collections from the county. Also, in December, we typically receive money from Washington County Cooperative Library System for the, our portion of the levy. And that's a big over a million dollar payment that comes in in December. So we try to manage our investments to maximize our return. When those monies come in, we do exceed that limit, which is okay under the state guidelines where revenues like that, we can exceed the limit for up to 10 days while we reinvest elsewhere. So because that did occur is technically a non-compliance of our investment policy, but we were compliant with state statutes for that investment pool. Talking a little bit about the diversification of our portfolio. This again shows the value of having an investment advisor and diversifying our portfolio. The blue bars there, the state local government investment pool earning 0.75%. Actually, in March, that just dropped to 0.6%. You'll see in our core portfolio, we were earning just almost 1.9%. Now it's down to 1.38. As we have some of those longer term investments at the higher rate, those mature, we have, we end up turning those over into lower rate instruments. And that's why you'll see that drop a little bit, but we are still significantly higher than the state pool. And then our bond funds, we are earning now at the end of December, almost 1.7%. Like again, we'll see that start to drop a little bit, but because of that, we are earning as a whole over 1%, which is better than what we could buy individual investments for. So this has helped us and it does bring in more money for our bond program as well as our other funds. Talk a little bit about the CARES Act funding that we received. So the county received their direct allocation from the federal government and they split it into all these different allocations. We participated in one way or another in three of these areas, the small business support program. We were part of the cities and special districts assistance. We got 617,969 allocated to us. And I'll talk about in a minute how much of that we were actually able to claim before the end of December, when the expenditures had to be made by. And then the utility assistance program, which I talked to you about before, that was through Community Action Network. So we have those, those three programs. But on top of that, we also had money from Business Assistance Grant from the state of Oregon directly. And then the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding for the police department from the state criminal justice commission. We did have another $278,000 from the state business organ that we had a couple of businesses that were eligible under that program, but it was a very restrictive program. And I think Jonathan Taylor mentioned to you that we ended up having to send that money back because it was so restrictive that we had very few businesses that could qualify. Those that did qualify under that program, we did fund them under our other business program. So they did get funded, just not under that those programs. So of that 617,000 plus almost 618,000 that we were allocated, we did claim and get reimbursed for just about $580,000. This was reimbursement of our PPE reimbursement for setting up the, the buildings with Plexiglas and putting, making them safe for things. Our, our distance learning. So the programs, the library was running as well as the poll center, we're able to be reimbursed for the extra expenditures for those programs. There's one other item and now I'm just drawing a blank. Oh, and all the technology that we had to put in place to have people be able to work virtually. From you be able to have your council meetings virtually as well as staff be able to work virtually, those expenditures were reimbursed as well. And then staff time that was dedicated towards the pandemic, we're able to get reimbursed for staff time as well. Jonathan had talked to you and gave you some great presentations about the small business assistance and the business assistance grant. So I won't go into the details of what happened there. The utility assistance program, we were able to assist 12 accounts for that $5,178. I was really hopeful that we would be able to fund more accounts. I gotta say that of the $2 million that was allocated across the county, we spent a half a million dollars. So I'm not sure exactly why it didn't get spent as, as high as we had hoped. But we did have 12 accounts in Walton that got assistance under this program in the amount of $5,178. One last thing to talk about CARES Act before I move on from this, Councilor Brooks brought up the Senate passing the most recent aid package and it going to the House for vote on Wednesday. There is $60 billion for cities in that bill at this point. It does include items that are at this point, we think would be eligible for funding under that would be again, some of our expenditures like PPE and so forth, that we've been able to qualify under the existing CARES Act monies or that we got. There is also language in there right now for revenue replacement. So if that stays in, then I believe until we get the actual rules from the federal government, I would think, see things like that gas tax revenue might be eligible for that. Some of the other revenues that we have had impacted due to the pandemic, we might be able to get made, those amounts made up. Again, I don't know what the rules are going to look like. But we're hopeful that, that the House passes and that $60 billion for city stays in there. I know that was a hard fought by the NLC, LOC, and a lot of other, my finance officers association nationally was very involved as well in keeping state and local governments funded under that package. So more to come as we learn more on that. And lastly, we have kicked off our 21 22 budget process back in January with the departments. Are there impacts into the, into our budget software, which called Questica? I will spend the next three weeks balancing those, those numbers. And then Sherilyn and I will meet with the departments the week of March 29th. It's a great week for us to sit down with all the departments and talk over their requested budgets and all the great things they do. It's, it's a week that I look forward to every year. You'll notice that we do have a tentative date of April 19th for a council work session to discuss the budget. This is something we've been doing for a number of years and it's, we didn't do it last year and it's depended a lot on what policy, if we, if staff needs to come to the council with some policy calls into the, before we put together the proposed budget. So more to come on whether that meeting will be held. But we have a little bit more, what if we, if we have an agenda items for that night, then we will let you know calendars, the 19th of April for that. And then May 10th, our, the first meeting of May for council meeting work session will take over for the, the first budget committee meeting. Then we'll have about two weeks before the second budget committee meeting. The third, if necessary, and I'm knocking on wood, hopefully we can get done into like we have in past years, but we do set aside that next night on the calendars, just in case. We'll do the state revenue sharing on the 14th of June and then your last meeting in June, the 28th, we'll have the budget hearing to adopt the budget. As I said, the departments have been working hard getting their, their requested budgets together. The budget premise that we gave them this year was just put in what you are doing now and only add what expenditures are outside of our control. So the budget premise really is keep it a status quo. If we, as we go through, if there's other revenues available, we've asked them to kind of identify things that would normally kind of be put into their budgets with revenues available and we'll have those discussions, but it's really kind of continuing just what we're doing now because there's still so much unknown. We'll be going through those items here in the next few weeks. We'll talk about them at the end of March and hopefully we'll have the next month or so, we'll have a better feel for what all that will look like. And the departments put together such solid budgets that I'm really, I really know that we'll, we'll have a solid budget to present to you in May. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I'll stop sharing.
Questions for Don? Councilor Pratt?
First, I want to say thank you to everybody for keeping the expenditures down, especially this year. I'm wondering with the, the property taxes you were saying come from the county, do they, do they send you what you've received? And I'm wondering if this year you think there'll be more of a delay with people that are making the three payments as opposed to the ones that pay upfront and use that discount? If you think there'll be an effect from that this year, that's of any significance?
We, I am confident that we will meet and maybe even exceed our budgeted amount. What I, we, we are trending right along where we need to be through December and up to this point. So we've got that big, the big push from people that paid that first payment. When this is all said and done, and I can talk to the county about the timing of the collections, what I strongly anticipate that what will happen is we will see more people that would have paid that upfront, got the 3% discount that'll pay in over time. Now they do, you're not getting the discount. So how that will look like, you know, we may even increase revenues because they'll have less people taking a discount over that. But I think collections will still stay at the same percentages are pretty close to what we've had in the past for this year.
And then my other question I, is just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you kind of summarize? I know on the investments, you're kind of limited of what you can invest in. Is there a way to explain that briefly?
So there's a number of things in our investment or policy that we are allowed to invest in. And of course, I don't have those up, but we do a lot of in treasure, in treasuries and treasury notes, treasury bills. We double, I believe, a little bit is in commercial paper and some private equity type, not stocks or anything, but some more safe investments. So we have diversified in Uh so we have diversified and I could read by the report in front of me, I could. Of course, I only have the. Let me see if I can bring back that back up and see where most of our, uh we have some in corporates, a small amount. So. If you look, pull up the investment uh report I gave you up in the upper right-hand corner, there's an asset allocation. That we have it, it by the policy. So we have a lot of, of the federal agencies. Um and some corporates, but they are very high-rated uh investments outside of the, the uh, the government, the federal uh investments we have.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question in a?
Yes, yes. I was just trying to point out that you guys can't just go uh by futures, pork bellies, et cetera.
Right. It, it, our policy, it is very, it is a little restrictive and it, there, anything that we do like in the corporates are, we have certain higher levels that we can do and we can't go underneath. So for higher riskier corporate investments either.
How's the Brooks?
Um thanks for speaking to the American Rescue Act and how that might impact uh if it gets, we hope it gets passed. Um and I guess my question is about the future around where would we see if. I'm not sure. I have concerns about um what happens when the eviction moratoriums end. And where we could see an impact in our budgets around that. Um and then I also wanted to say too, um just around the American Rescue Act, what I learned today is. That cities, if it passes, would, that are smaller than fifty thousand like we are, would um. They, the state gets the money and then they have thirty days to disperse. So bigger cities have sixty days. And then they get it where this money has sixty days to go to the state and then it's another thirty days to come to us. So that'd be ninety days. Max um according to the rough estimates that I understand. Um and then the other thing that I understood is that there's two dispersment periods. An initial one and then it's something until twenty twenty-four. So the planning is for planning out. And I know that a lot of this is timed for um both unemployment, but also this eviction moratorium conversation. And I'm just curious around where, where do we see that impact our city budget the most if we had? A sudden rash of evictions. Is that? Is that revenue from property taxes or commercial taxes? I'm just, I don't know where that lands.
So. It would be a little hard to fully answer. One, we would see it probably on the uh, the utility side. Uh if they, if people are evicted and there's vacancies and the utilities aren't being used, that we wouldn't necessarily see the revenues on that side. On the property tax side, I, where it makes a little difficult to fully answer is depending on the building owner. And the property owner, if they are still, they still own the, the building. Then they still have to pay the property taxes. So even if it's vacant, they're still responsible for the taxes. Uh so I wouldn't see that it would have a large impact on us, you know, could it? Because maybe they're not receiving revenues either and. What they end up doing at their property, uh but for the most part, it would not have an impact on our budget. Uh obviously, there's impacts in a lot of other places, unfortunately.
Thank you very much for that.
Questions for Don? All right. Uh the only thing I, I saw you really question, Don, it's um in the Metro Mayor's Consortium was a discussion. Uh there's a house bill in the legislature that will allow cities or groups of cities to create their own banks. Because of the low return on the state fund. Uh those like, I believe those cities that have less than fifty million dollars go there. And then when you exceed that, that's when you can go and start doing your own investment. Uh because there's some frustration in the smaller cities that they're basically getting no return on their money from the state-run investment uh fund. So I know some of our money's in there, but some of it's being invested at a higher return, but uh. Are you seeing the same, obviously you're probably seeing the same thing, that very little return, like really a smidgen of interest?
Yeah, I, I, I would say that from what I, I, we're still looking at that bill and I, I'm involved with the, the league in the kind of a revenue committee. It's just one we're watching. I don't think it'd be something that we would have an interest in doing. And I, I don't think it would be helpful to us and that. Because that bill has options into it. I would, as I sit here today with what I know about it, it would not be something that I would come to you with a recommendation to participate in.
Alright.
I think what we have in place uh and the banking relationships we have, the, the services there are much better than what we would have on the other avenue.
Okay.
But we are watching it.
Okay, cool. Alright. I guess that's it for you tonight. Thank you for attending and thank you for your update.
Alright.
Alright. So that brings us to public hearings. And we have a quasi judicial public hearing, which is consideration of a plan map amendment. And plan text amendment modifying map ten dash one of the twelfth and comprehensive plan and. Chapter fifty-one of the twelfth development code, admitting the designated boundaries of neighborhood commercial CN. And medium-low density residential RML zones for parcels located at tax map two S one three five D. Lots four hundred, four hundred and one, five hundred, five oh one, and this is file number PMA dash twenty dash zero 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 two. And PTA twenty dash zero 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 five. I will start by reading the required statement and then we will hear a report from city staff and then the applicant. After that, I will take public testimony. Council may then ask questions after the testimony. After the public hearing portion, I will close the hearing and council can enter into deliberations. The state legislature requires the following information to be read, ORS one nine seven, seven six three sub five and six. And ORS one nine seven, seven nine six, three B. One, the applicable criteria, the applicable criteria for this decision. And TDC thirty-three zero seven zero five plan amendments. One A, granting the amendment is in the public interest. One B, the public interest is protected by granting amendment at this time. One C, the proposed amendment is in conformity with the applicable objectives of the Twelton Community Plan. One D, the following factors will cons, are, were consciously considered. The various characteristics of the areas in the city. The sustainability of the areas for particular land uses and improvements in the areas. Trends in land improvement and development, property values. The needs of economic enterprises and future development of the area needed right of way and access for and to particular sites in the area. Natural resources of the city and protection and conservation of said resources. Perspective requirements for the development of natural resources in the city. The public need for helpful, safe aesthetic surroundings and conditions. And proof of change in a neighborhood or area or a mistake in the plan text or plan map. For the property under consideration or additional relevant factors to consider. E. If the amendment involves residential uses, then the appropriate school district or districts must be able to reasonably accommodate. Additional residential capacity by means determined by any affected school district. F, considering the amendment is consistent with the applicable state Oregon planning goals and applicable Oregon administrative rules. Including compliance with the transportation planning rule, TPR OAR six sixty dash zero one two dash zero zero six zero. G, granting the amendment is consistent with the Metropolitan Service District's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. H, granting the amendment is consistent with level of service F for the PM peak hour and E. For the one half hour before and after the PM peak hour, the town center twenty forty design type, TDC map nine dash four. And E slash E for the rest of the twenty forty design types in the city's planning area. I, granting the amendment is consistent with the objectives and policies regarding potable water. Sanitary sewer and service water management pursuant to TDC twenty dash zero two zero. Water management issues are adequately addressed during development or redevelopment anticipated to follow the granting of a planned amendment. J, the applicant has entered into a development agreement. This criterion applies only to an amendment specific to property within the urban planning area, UPA. Also known as the planning area boundary, PAB, as defined in both the Urban Growth Management Agreement. UGMA with Clackamas County and the Urban Planning Area Agreement, UPAA with Washington County. TDC map nine dash one illustrates this area. Item two. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria of those criteria in the development code, which you believe apply to this decision. Item three, if additional documents or evidence is provided in support of the application, any party should be entitled to a continuance of the hearing. Item four, unless there is a continuous, a continuance before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing. A participant may request, before the hearing is closed, that the record remain open at least seven days after the hearing. Item five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council. And the parties in opportunity respond to the issue precludes app, appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity. To allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Item six, the hearing will begin with a presentation by city staff. Followed by testimony on behalf of the applicant and supporters of the applicant. Next follows the evidence against the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted. After evidence is received, the hearing will be closed and a council will deliberate towards a decision. Any tentative decision will be reduced to a final written decision and adopted by the council, usually at its next meeting. Item number seven, if any council members wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, they should do so now. I see your hands up. Alright. So that's all the, the script I have to read. So we'll now begin the hearing. Uh and we'll hear from city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director, here to present the staff report. While I get it queued up, I'll just note that Tabitha Boshidi, Assistant Planner, is here with me this evening. Um who worked on the staff report and the materials in your packet. So just before we get started with the map and text amendment this evening, just a couple of housekeeping items. So um in your packets, you'll have found attachment number two, which is a. Memo and supplemental materials from the applicant dated March fourth, twenty twenty-one. The materials contained in there affect a couple of items in the presentation, and so I'll just walk through them um as they come up. Um you also have a couple of other things that were submitted um today. Uh the first of which is a letter from the applicant addressing concerns raised by John Increase Lucchini. Uh that's again dated today, March eighth. You have a couple of attachment from John Increase Lucchini. Um that were submitted to council attention also dated today. And then lastly, you have a. A memorandum from the applicant with some proposed conditions of approval that they are asking the council to consider. And I'll just jump into the presentation. So. The proposal that you have before you this evening is um a map amendment, which is changing the zoning boundary. Of the existing commercial, uh neighborhood commercial zone with residential um medium-low density. And so I'll, I'll show a little bit more about those in subsequent slides, but this is just an overview. Um there is an additional text amendment that would eliminate a restriction on locating the neighborhood commercial zone within three hundred feet of a school property. Essentially, if the map is configured the way in which the applicant proposes it. Then that would conflict with the Horizon School property. And then in that uh supplemental memorandum dated the fourth that I mentioned. Uh the applicant has added a line of text amendment proposing to add basic utility. Facilities as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zone. Um the rationale for that change is that. Um they're currently not a permitted use, but uh things like stormwater facilities. Fall under that use category in chapter thirty-nine of our development code and it's the only zone in the city. Um that doesn't have that as an allowed use and so that um. Text amendment would correct that um and allow for stormwater facilities in the future. Uh the last thing I'll just note on the proposal is, as the mayor mentioned, this is a quasi judicial application. And so uh the applicant is proposing it. It's been reviewed by city staff based on the information that was available. To us at the time of the writing of the staff report and the findings and so forth. And so obviously you have some materials before you this evening. Um that were not addressed in that staff report. So I just wanted to note that. And let's see. Moving on to the next slide, so the subject area, which I think all of you are familiar with by this point, so I'll kind of breeze. Through these slides, which is for the benefit of the public on this Zoom meeting and the record. Uh the state is located on the east side of Boone's Ferry Road, north of southwest Green Hill Lane and south of the Horizon School Property. Um the total property, I think, is around thirty-nine acres and then the uh area that's affected by this proposed map amendment is about twenty-three and a half acres. So again, the red here just highlights the area where the change is occurring and I'll show that in better detail on subsequent slides. Uh so the existing zoning you have here um has shown in the salmon color is a three point nine acre node of neighborhood commercial. Um it's north of southwest Green Hill Lane, which is also the approximate location of a future yet identified. Extension of the Salt Creek Parkway. Um just some kind of basics about the tract is that it's about four hundred and fifty feet by four hundred and fifty feet. So it's a roughly square piece and then the proposed zoning would uh keep the existing acreage of three point nine acres the same. And it would reconfigure it so that there's more frontage um for the property. So approximate dimensions is seven hundred and fifty feet. Of frontage and then about two hundred and seventy feet deep. And so as you'll see from some of the conceptual diagrams, um this is a beneficial change in the, allows for more um access options. For the properties as a whole. Um the thing to, I think, keep in mind in the applicant is, I'm sure you're gonna get into this a little more in their. Uh presentation of the application, but essentially um Boone's Ferry Road is an arterial roadway, which means that access. Uh points are limited on of that roadway and through development, the Washington County would seek to limit and consolidate access points. And so. Um having that neighborhood commercial node down there in the south where it's potentially cited too close to the future, uh the Salt Creek Parkway intersection. And then also fairly close to the access point for the neighborhood as well as to the uh existing school access that is right above the label shared access. And then. Um of course, there's a need to provide future access to the um. Uh community partners for affordable housing, which is uh tax lot three oh three on this map. So um. I'll let the applicant kind of take, take that on a little more if they choose to, but just to give you a little bit of background of the rationale for the change. Um so next year, we come to the uh conceptual development diagram. I think the thing that I want to emphasize with this slide is that. No development is proposed as part of this application. It's simply a change in the zoning map. And then some corresponding text amendments to, to basically ensure uh future success upon rezoning. And so, you know, number one, it's not a proposal to develop anything. It's not a proposal to set roadways or street systems or anything. It's. Showing essentially how would um the reconfigured parcel still be functional for a theoretical commercial development? It may, you know, not develop for a commercial for quite some time. Um and so uh we still do in the zone change criteria. Have a specific criteria that requires that public interest is best protected by granting the amendment. And so. We ask the applicant to show that the proposed configuration is in the public interest by ensuring that it is at least. Feasible from a conceptual standpoint to develop it and that they weren't reconfiguring the parcel in such a way that created a hardship for the future. And so. We believe that was met. I'd also call your attention to, again, that March fourth uh submittal, which is attachment two in your. I'd also call your attention to, again, that March fourth, uh, submittal, which is attachment two in your packet. And the applicant has provided an additional conceptual development scenario, uh, which was revised to show a larger stormwater uh, facility, which is probably more realistic. Um, they've still shown roughly the same amount of, uh, commercial development on the parcel, um, as far as total square footage, although the actual area in which the commercial development is located would be smaller. Um, just before I leave this slide, a couple of comments on, um, the allowed uses, um, the neighborhood commercial allows, um, a variety of kind of small format, um, retail uses, small food store, um, hair salon, uh, pharmacy, things of that nature. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit greater detail on a subsequent slide where I'll show the table, but just to, to set that out as we look at the conceptual development plan. Moving on, uh, the text amendment itself. So as we mentioned, the, um, proposed reconfiguration of the zone would conflict with this existing location restriction in the code. A little bit of kind of verbal or oral history about this provision. The understanding was that this, uh, text restriction was added at a time in which there wasn't actually anywhere in the city that was um, zone neighborhood commercial, but there was, uh, concern that there might be like a seven eleven or something like that, that would be too close to say, a middle school or something to that effect and, and cause a, um, you know, I guess an attractive nuisance to people wanting to visit off campus to buy, um, various sundries. And so, um, you know, we've put, put the apple, the, the application out, the, um, school district, the, the Horizon School, of course, had saw this this proposal and had the opportunity to comment on it. They, they did not comment on it. Um, we've worked with the school district on other issues, so I would imagine that if they had any objection to it, we would have heard from them. Um, obviously in the future, the council gets to decide where additional uh, nodes of neighborhood commercial are applied. And so if the node was next to a school and it seemed like there was evidence that suggested that was not a good location for it, then, uh, the council would still have the opportunity to, um, not apply the zone in that location. So, um, I think the thought is, is that it's a fairly benign change and supports this particular amendment. And then, as I mentioned before, there's the additional, um, text amendment that would, um, that's not reflected in the presentation, that would allow for basic utility facilities, which include stormwater, um, ponds to be developed on the property, similar to what's shown in the conceptual development plan. So again, these are the properties that would be affected by the text amendment. And then, of course, as you all know, here's the location of the Horizon Church and School property. Just touching back on the, um, allowed uses. And so we have the conceptual development plan that showed roughly ten thousand square foot, uh, occupant and then a five thousand square foot occupant. And so we had some questions about, you know, what, what kind of uses might that be based on what's allowed? And so we did a little bit of research and looked at it. And so a ten thousand square foot occupant based on the allowed uses might be a slightly smaller format, um, retail pharmacy or drugstore like a Walgreens or Rite Aid. Typically a little bit larger, but it could be a smaller version of that. Um, as far as the five thousand square foot, there's, there's nothing that necessarily squarely falls into that. A lot of the uses in the use table typically are around the two thousand to four thousand square foot size, but some examples of uses, which could be like a multi-tenant five thousand square foot building is it could be two thousand square foot hair salon, a three thousand square foot dry cleaner co-locating to be five thousand square feet. There is also the food store, which is up to four thousand square feet. Um, in some quick research, I wasn't able to find, uh, a close analog for what that might be in reality, but it isn't allowed use. And then, of course, a typical, uh, convenience store, um, uh, would be about three thousand square feet in size. And then, of course, just to note before we leave this side, um, there are permitted uses as far as, uh, public community center, recreation center that would be allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone. Um, so here are the applicable criteria. The mayor, um, already read them into the records, so I'm not going to read them again. Um, I think that the, uh, thing that I'll note here is, is that, again, the, uh, findings that are in your packet and the uh, recommendation that you'll see from the Planning Commission was based on what was in the record. And so there obviously, um, as of today, have been some other pieces of evidence submitted into the record, which we've not had a time, time to um, fully respond to. So, um, I think I'll just note that. And then, um, I will turn it over to our, uh, Planning Commission Chair, Bill Beers to present the Planning Commission's recommendation. And then, of course, staff will be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, city staff presented this planned text amendment and planned map amendment to the Planning Commission, uh, last February on the eighteenth. As Steve noted earlier, the PMA and PTA presented to the Planning Commission is slightly different than what was before you tonight. We asked questions about the staff and the applicant. We listened to citizen comment. Uh, at the end of all that, I made a motion, uh, to forward to council both the PTA and the PMA as presented by staff. And we voted to approve that motion. Cut the main factors, I think, that led to our approval were that it was, uh, the net size of the two parcels of neighborhood commercial and RML stayed the same size. They just were reconfigured. Um, we like the idea that this change allowed for entering the neighborhood commercial zone without having to go through a neighborhood first. Um, owing to how close, uh, the entrances, um, to that area can be to, uh, to the intersection of Boone's Ferry and, uh, Basalt Creek Parkway, or what will be Basalt Creek Parkway. And then, uh, also moving that neighborhood commercial zone to kind of that vertical orientation visually insulates the rest of the RML zone from Boone's Ferry. Um, one thing that I noted, uh, though, over this, um, procedure of assault creek topics coming to the planning commission, um, is I think it's kind of indicated to me that there may be a limitation of our CIO system for, uh, representing comment from citizens. Specifically, the people that live in the Basalt Creek area don't have a CIO to represent them. And while they're not Twelton residents, uh, they'll potentially be impacted by the decisions that we make. And, uh, right now it seems like the only way for them to get their concerns heard on be on record is to come to meetings on related topics and then submit their written and vocal comments at that time. Uh, so like it's been, I think, just about ten years since the CIOs were created. And, and I don't think the situation was on council's radar back then. And maybe that's something that could be looked at going forward. Like for these folks that live in areas that can become part of the city, how can they re- get represented before they're part of the city? Thank you.
And that, that concludes our presentation, but of course, we're happy to answer any questions the council has with staff at this time.
Right. So let's go ahead and have the applicant, uh, now present their case for the PTA and PMA. And welcome, Mimi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of Lennar Northwest, who is the applicant this evening. Um, can everybody see my screen? Wonderful. Um, so we do have, uh, Lennar here, Mike Anders and David Forrest. We also have the full AKS team. Um, staff gave a very thorough overview of the application, but at its very most basic sense, uh, what we are trying to do is request to change the square, uh, commercial zone in the, uh, southwest corner of this site, the, the orange shape. We're trying to change that square into a rectangle. And the primary reason for that is to improve access for the future, um, development of this region. So that's the, that's the very basic version, but we'll dive into some more details. As I said, staff gave a good overview of the application. I don't want to duplicate what they've already, uh, discussed. But, um, primarily this reconfiguration is going to improve our access for the, for the various uses around this district and allows for shared access off of a local street, um, which improves the developability of this commercial district. Um, there are other changes that are supportive of that, but, uh, that, that's the primary goal. Staff explained the location of the site, and I think we're all familiar, but we're at the southern tip of the city in the Basalt Creek Planning Area. Zooming in a bit, you can see here are the zoning designations around the region. Um, we are talking about that CN commercial space, uh, in the middle of the red square. One of the important features to note is the orange line at the south that's got a S shape to it. That is the alignment, um, that was originally envisioned for the Basalt Creek Parkway extension. Uh, that alignment has changed somewhat. Uh, the intersection location hasn't, but the S curve has smoothed out and shifted over towards the east. Another important piece of context is within the both Salt Creek, uh, concept plan, there is a local street that has been planned and, and, um, defined within that district. And this local street is really envisioned to provide shared access for a variety of uses in the district. Um, and this proposed amendment will allow the commercial site to take access off of that local street. So zooming in a bit, um, this is, this is a somewhat muddy exhibit, but it's very important. So I'm going to walk you through it a little bit. Um, staff pointed out that along Boone's Ferry Road, that is a Washington County roadway, as will be Basalt Creek Parkway. Those are both considered arterial roadways. And Washington County has a minimum spacing standard for any new access of six hundred, excuse me, six hundred feet. We have, uh, shown dimensions on this map of six hundred feet from that future intersection of the Salt Creek Parkway and Boone's Ferry Road. And you can see that, um, there is not an access possible to the commercial site directly from Basalt Creek Parkway that meets that six hundred foot spacing standard. Now, if we move over to Boone's Ferry Road, um, you cannot meet the six hundred foot spacing standard between the planned local roadway, which, um, somewhat coincides with the Horizon School access point and Basalt Creek Parkway. Um, so the local road, the planned local road up at the north can meet the spacing standard, but the commercial would not be permitted an access point. So the commercial can't get access off Basalt Creek Parkway. It can't get access off of Boone's Ferry. Therefore, it would have to access through the residential neighborhood, which is what your planning commission chair emphasized was less desirable to have, uh, commercial trips traveling through a neighborhood, trying to find that commercial district and having those additional trips, um, burdening the neighborhood. This is the original sketch that we showed to planning commission and was in our application materials. Uh, staff pointed out, this is very much a conceptual layout. Um, staff was questioning the viability of, uh, the configuration we put together. It's long and it's skinny. Um, and they wanted to make sure that what we were, the, the blob on the map, um, was actually buildable and viable for a commercial center. So we put together a theoretical map uh, showing how access parking, general, uh, configuration could work. And you'll note, we have a stormwater facility shown in the southwest corner. That is where the, the water naturally drains. That's where, um, there is a natural release point over on the other side of Boone's Ferry Road. So that stormwater facility in this sketch is designed to, um, treat stormwater for that commercial site. So this design pulls access from the local street, the planned future local street. Uh, it does not have to go through the residential neighborhood. That local residential street or that local street can also provide access to the school. Uh, it can provide a stub to the north to allow access to the future affordable housing project to the north, um, and to the residential neighborhood to the east. Um, so this meets access spacing, it meets site distance requirements. Um, it minimizes our conflict points and makes for, um, smoother movement throughout the region. Um, that was what was presented to the planning commission. Um, I suspect city council is aware that the adjacent property under the Lucchini's have significant concerns with, uh, how their property relates to the planning within Basalt Creek. Um, they have two primary concerns. Uh, number one is about, um, stormwater impacts to their site. They are currently inundated with a lot of water, stormwater. And, uh, they would like to know that first and foremost, it's not going to get worse and, um, hopefully it can be improved. Um, second, they raise concerns about traffic and how, um, it will, how the impacts of this new local roadway, the commercial development, the residential development will relate to their home, their access and the frontage road on the east, uh, excuse me, on the west side of Boone's Ferry Road. Uh, they also raise concern about public process. Um, but they are being heard, uh, they're participating, they're advocating, um, and despite not having a PIO, um, a CIO rather, um, they are making their voices heard. Um, we heard what they had to say at Planning Commission. Uh, we tried to address it in some of our verbal testimony, but coming out of that meeting before we come before city council, we wanted to, um, try to reach out more directly. And so we've done a lot of scrambling since our planning commission hearing um, to address their concerns. Uh, specifically, we have gone out and done a site visit with them out at the property so that we could see their concerns, um, see the existing condition and, uh, try to find resolution where we can. Um, so we have made some revisions to the application. We do apologize for the last minute inundation of materials for the council, um, but it was important to respond to the Lucchini's and their concerns. And we believe that we've made real progress on that. So we have revised the application in a couple of ways. Um, as Steph pointed out, we've added basic utilities as a additional text amendment. This will allow us to provide a regional storm facility, um, within that southwest corner of the Autumn Sunrise Project. Uh, that regional stormwater facility will allow us to uh, pick up the water that is currently going towards the Lucchini's property, um, directed internal to the Autumn Sunrise Project and down to this regional facility and, um, release it in a place where the water naturally wants to go down in the southwest corner. So that should alleviate the, the, um, stormwater that is currently headed right towards our house. Um, the other thing that we did is, um, the other thing that we, we talked about at that site visit was about their transportation concerns. The tricky part with the transportation concerns is that we still need to do additional study. Um, we're currently putting the app, the subdivision application together. That is a very large effort, um, as part of that, a tra- transportation study is being put together that will look at traffic volumes, um, site safety, um, intersection volumes, um, all the things that you want to think about when you're planning a transportation system. Um, so, coming out of that meeting with the Lucchini's, um, we prepared a letter to them outlining what will happen with the subdivision application and Lennar's commitments to address those concerns. So number one, it's a commitment that our stormwater system will do what I just described. It's going to pick up that stormwater that's currently uh, headed towards their property under Boone's Ferry, routed through our site and down to the regional storm facility. Um, and then number two, uh, we, we clarified that the conceptual exhibit shown in the map uh, shown in this application is conceptual only, and that local roadway may move or shift, uh, depending on what that transportation study shows. And, uh, that we will have a public outreach effort to talk about that roadway location um, before the subdivision application, uh, goes through its public process. before the subdivision application goes through its public process. So those were put into a letter for the Lucchini's. The other thing that we thought was important to daylight and clarify, we talked about it at the planning commission meeting, but we wanted to make sure that the conceptual sketch that was in front of the public reflected a regional storm facility, not just a storm facility for the commercial site. So this site plan that's on the screen now shows that regional storm facility and that the commercial site is still viable. So what changed between the first site plan and this site plan is there was a loading area at the rear of that 10,000 square foot commercial center or building that's really not necessary. It can be loaded from the side. And it was significantly overparked. So this shows us parked at four per thousand for parking spaces per thousand square feet of retail space. That's a pretty reasonable parking ratio for a commercial center. And then obviously it shows the regional storm facility. So we can look back and forth between this is the new layout and this is what was originally in the application. They're very, very similar. Just a little smushing, so to speak, but it does reflect what a regional stormwater facility would look like. So we thought that was important for public disclosure. So we've submitted to the council a letter that outlines our stormwater approach and the conveyance framework. And clarifies that that regional, that that local roadway will go through a public process before the connection point is finalized. The Lucchini's still feel like that letter is not enough commitment. What they would like to see is a set of conditions of approval that really put it in writing that those are requirements. We've, we've talked to staff about the ability to put conditions of approval on the application. It's important within a zone change to make sure that conditions are related to the applicable approval criteria. And we did that within our letter. We outlined which applicable approval criteria those conditions relate to. You have specific applicable criteria that relate to infrastructure, specifically water, stormwater, sewer. And so that's a very easy criteria to relate the condition to. You also have public interest. This is clearly in the public interest to make sure that the public safety is, is protected for both transportation and stormwater. So we think we've got that relationship there. So the other amendment we had to make to the application, as I mentioned, we have code changes to help with the implementation. The original application included the three, removal of the 300 foot separation from public schools. Staff went over that, and then we have added, since planning commission, adding basic utilities as an allowed use within the neighborhood commercial zone. This is the only zone in the city that doesn't permit it. And I think it's again in the public interest that we be allowed to do a regional storm facility in this location to help resolve some of the existing storm deficiencies in the area. So with that, one of the most important things is how the application relates to the public interest. First and foremost, this makes the commercial district more viable. Right now, it's a color on a map and it doesn't really have reasonable access and it's a tough spot to develop commercial in, in all truthfulness. There's, it's, it's isolated. There's a lot of pass by traffic, not a lot of destination traffic. So we need to set it up for success in the best way we can and, and solving the access issue is a huge, huge part of that. And then obviously the storm facility, we believe, is in the public interest as well. Improved access, consolidated access on Boons Ferry is in the public interest. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. I do want to express significant appreciation to city staff. This has been a roll-in since the planning commission meeting. I was communicating with staff over the weekend, which is above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you again to staff and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any other folks in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to speak in support of the application?
There's no one at the poll center, sir, and I believe John Lucini is here to speak, but probably I'll let him decide if it's for or against.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to make some comments if that's appropriate now.
No. Is it in to support the application or against the application?
Sort of depends. Well, we, we submitted some written comments earlier today. And I was going to speak to those and they relate to Mimi's conversation. And are we would, I, it can be a support of the application if certain conditions are met in the approval.
Okay, go ahead and you can always be on the opposed side too. We'll let it fly.
See what happens. So thanks again for allowing me the time to speak. My name is John Lucini. I live at 23677 Southwest Boons Ferry Road. Earlier today, my wife Grace and I submitted written comments to the council regarding the planned text amendment, planned map amendment. In those comments, we referenced the, the visit from the folks from Lennar and ATS to our property on last Friday. We're very, very appreciative of their efforts to come out and meet with us onsite and get a firsthand view of what our, what our concerns were. They did propose some changes to solve, I guess, some of our concerns regarding the stormwater and the transportation, transportation issues. Basically to set up their stormwater system to capture the water from the east side of Boons Ferry Road and their development. Take it to keep it on their site, treat it there and then cap or cap off the, the pipe underneath Boons Ferry Road that delivers stormwater to our property currently so that we would not receive any stormwater from that location. Also, they discussed the, you know, the issue of making sure that the roadway is conceptual and that went through a proper vetting to make sure it's in the best location for everybody. We, we appreciate those things. Those do meet our approval. However, as Mimi mentioned, we would like to see those incorporated in the application as condition, you know, conditions for approval. I believe that ATS did submit draft language for those conditions to the city. And we are in agreement with them and we would like to see those, see those approved. If they're not, if the city chooses not to do that, then you know, our comments would stand and you know, what we've already submitted lists our issues with, with the application.
Any others who would speak in support of the application? Okay, I'm seeing any hands shoot up. Are those now opposed to the application? This is your time to give your testimony why you oppose the application. Okay, it looks all quiet. All right, councilors, this is the time for questions of any of the folks who spoke tonight. So floor is open. Just raise your hand. Let me know you have a question. Councilor Pratt.
All three? I'll start with, my question is, you want to get rid of the 300 feet from the school? How far is the edge of the property from us, the school?
That sounds like a pretty simple question, doesn't it? The tricky part with this site is that the school has a strange configuration. So we're, we're closer than 300 feet to the property itself, but it's got a flagpole. It's, it's kind of a flag lot. So I am going to share my screen here and show you on Google Earth. Can you see my screen? So our commercial district will be in this location. So the corner will be right about here. So we're technically going to be abutting the school, but if we look at distance to the building itself, we are 973 feet away. So the distance from the school itself is, is far in excess of the 300 feet, but we're directly abutting the land owned by the school on this flagpole. So that's, that's why it's kind of a hard question to answer.
Okay. Thank you on that one. My next question is for probably for city staff. It says in the CN code, it says minimum setback from front is 20 feet. Front, what's front? Is that from the road or from the front of the store or? I probably should know this, but I apologize if you don't. But what does front mean for that 20 foot setback?
Tabitha Boshetti with the planning division, that would be the front of the lot. The street side generally.
Okay, and then the, the last thing I guess I want to start and bring up is if I'm doing my math right, you're talking like 60, 62 cars, parking spots and I'm seeing one access for this area. Is that correct? And if so, and it might not be feasible, but would there be any thought in the future to like a right turn in and out off of Boons Ferry or would that just cause a whole new set of issue?
That's exactly what our transportation study is going to be looking at is how access is going to work. Turn lanes, some of that geometry. There is a center turn lane on Boons Ferry. So that's already somewhat accounted for, but internal to that local road. We, we need to look at that traffic study to, to make sure that everything functions.
Okay, other questions? Councilor Brooks.
I have only one kind of a weird question. Thank you for everyone and all the last minute work too. I've been, I've looked over there at water and that before and and think that the improvements help, help me and working together with the homeowners is appreciated. That helps, that helps us a lot too. And also to the, to the planning commission, we do have a Basalt Creek Committee. It's not a CIO, but there is a committee. So there's a beginning on that. So I just want to talk about that with public engagement and I'm proud of that. My question is for, I guess would be Steve. When we talk about small retail, sometimes I think of 7-11s and things like that for small retail near schools that sometimes sell alcohol. And I'm just curious around alcohol sales at that location, if that's a permitted use.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know the particulars about what the, what powers the council allows to grant liquor licenses or not, but there's not, it's not a zoning issue. In other words, if it's, if it's a retail sale of beverages, then, then there's not a distinction in the zoning code whether or not those beverages are alcoholic.
Okay. So it could be. Thank you.
Councilor Hillier.
Thank you again for all this information. So I guess I would like a clarification on exactly what can go in those small businesses. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I want to be very clear on the record that there are a lot of disordered behaviors and that close to a school really concerns me. And not just the alcohol, but I want to make sure that the word pharmacy does not equal a medical marijuana dispensary. And I also want to just mention disordered gambling to see if that would be allowed in that space.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll tackle the easy one first, which is that it's too close to residential and schools for marijuana, whether that's medical or retail. I mean, again, unfortunately, you know, similar, I don't, I, I don't really have much knowledge about how like lottery licenses are granted. I mean, it's, it's, it's part of retail. I don't know that there's really anything that within zoning code that kind of discriminates in that way. And so, yeah, I think that, you know, again, when we looked at the question of whether or not the locational restriction belonged in the zoning code in the first place and kind of makes sense. I think the question really is, you know, is the, the node exists now? And so, you know, is locating this particular node, you know, shifted up 300 feet or so to the north and allowing the same uses in the existing location? And then knowing that you as the council will get the opportunity to yea or nay any future locations if the neighborhood commercial zone was expanded again. I think that's the information that I would, I guess, ask you to consider, but that, you know, I respect your decision either way.
Other questions? All right, so.
This may sound like a dumb question. Are you probably addressed it? But how tall are these, like especially the retail area? Are we allowing? You know, like you have the retail on the bottom, then you have apartments. Like I'm thinking how tall these buildings are going to be. Just, just curious, you know, what we're zoning for.
Do you, do you know Tabitha, the height?
Yes. The maximum height in this zone is 25 feet.
It's really pretty much single story retail. And then, and then residential is not allowed, like the mixed use residential isn't allowed here. And so it would just be fairly similar, I think, to what the applicant laid out as far as the allowed uses, smaller format. Possibly, you know, several smaller uses in a single building.
Just as a small point, there's like a small allowance for like a live-in, like a mom and pop shop, like owner operator lives in the same place, but not, not full scale mixed use still.
Thank you.
Other questions? Scanning my pictures here. Councilor Pratt.
Would a vape shop be allowed in this commercial?
I think we, I think maybe we would need it, need a second on that one. I mean, some of the uses are kind of hard, hard to parse. I mean, it allows retail and a convenience store. And so I, I just, without getting too deeply into the zoning, I think that a variety of different products, you know, that are legally sold could be sold here. I think that that's again, not something that zoning is typically had control over. I mean, a lot of, and with the exception of marijuana, a lot of I think controls that you see for, you know, other businesses or, you know, the ability for council to approve liquor licenses and then perhaps municipal code prohibitions on, on things that I'm guessing by the shake of your head, there's probably not a lot of leeway to approve or disapprove liquor licenses. So I mean, yeah, I think that, that, that's accurate. It doesn't allow bars and restaurants. So that's, that's the one thing we can say for sure.
Other questions?
Or a gas station?
Gas stations are auto service centers. Don't see that listed in this category.
So I've got a question. So in all the years. So in all the years I've been on council and mayor, I've never seen conditions applied to a P T A or P M A. That's usually done on application for development. So explain to me why we would attach conditions to a P T A and P M A now. I was brought up on the horrors of Dolan versus the city of Tiger on takings, and this sounds a lot like it. So can you explain to me why we would have conditions on a P T A? That could either be, and those people who spoke before, or I'll pull in Sean, probably reluctantly. Why are we doing this? Because in ten years, I've never seen a condition on a P T A.
Well, from, from our position, we're comfortable with it because it's really documenting what's going to be required for the subdivision anyway. So it's a little duplicative. So that's why our team is pretty comfortable with it. Zone changes are sometimes conditioned with a trip cap, which is a tool that applies, because this is applying to specific property. You can have a condition of approval that runs with the site. So something like a trip cap is used to manage how that land develops in the future, making sure that it's meeting the intent of what was presented for the zone itself. In this case, again, we're, we're simply documenting requirements that are going to apply to the subdivision. So it's why we're comfortable with it. It's why we showed what the criteria that it would be directly applicable to within the plan amendment process. So that's, that's our position, but I defer to staff for, for their thoughts.
Yeah, because I'd like to ask our city, the question to our attorney. Again, I, I don't remember this being done in a P T A. Trip cap is a little bit different because they're on generally for their greater good and for development. To me, this seems that these conditions could be noted and then inserted in the development application. But I don't want to expose the city to something that we shouldn't be doing. So Sean. Can you find that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important to just go, kind of go back on what, what's before the council. So right now, what we have is the map and the, and they're asking to change the map. So nothing related to the sites. So all the pictures related to what they may propose in the future, that's actually not before the council. So they could tomorrow change that. And that, and, and with their subdivision application, propose something, something different. But the map itself is being changed and then the text is being changed. And so the, the risk that I, I need to look into, and, and if the council is looking at imposing conditions, there is, as you, as you presented, in order to impose conditions, the city has to have a nexus and rough proportionality, and that's that Nolan, Dolan. And then there's a new case called Coon's New being like eight years ago. But what, what that does is it requires the city to make those findings when it imposes a, a condition of to, to improve public property or to pay money. And what the condition that's being proposed is for the applicant to improve public facilities as well as some additional things. And so I need to look at that if the council is interested in, in that and provide some legal advice on whether or not that can be done in this situation. I have my doubts. And, and then to possibly give the council additional options, if there's a direction that wants to go, there may be better ways to go about this rather than as a condition of development. Certainly, when the actual development comes in, staff will look at the impacts that that development is having. So if it's one piece of property or multiple properties in the subdivision, the staff will look at those impacts and then determine what mitigation is required in order to meet the code that exists to, for instance, for stormwater or whatever, or traffic. All of those things will be analyzed as part of the application for development that happens later.
All right.
So just to clarify that, that is, again, to reiterate what Sean said, that is not what's before you tonight.
So my question would be then of the applicant. Is there a certain rush to get this P T A and P M A approved tonight? Or is there something we could wait on? So that Sean and staff have the ability to research city's exposure to allowing a condition on a P T A? Is there something where we could possibly continue the hearing? To a date certain so that Sean can cross the Ts and dot the Is legally to make sure the city is not going to be exposed?
We're, we're struggling a little bit. We do have significant urgency to keep our application moving so that we can hit timelines that are that we've got a variety of timelines that we've got to hit. And, and that's part of why we did such a significant scramble between the planning commission meeting and before tonight to make sure that we had all that information. The conditions aren't for us. We're, we're willing to put them on. It's to try to provide some assurance for the Lucchini's. So we're, we're trying to, in all frankness, avoid an appeal process. With, appeal is going to delay us too. We don't want that. But we're, we're struggling to hit our timeline. So we'd, we'd like to have a decision tonight. We'd like to, with, with self-imposed conditions, it seems like the, the risk of complaints against nexus and proportionality are, are minimal. That would be our appeal and we're the ones asking for it. So that's, that's kind of the hard spot that we're in.
If I could respond just to that, so a, a couple of things. One, they're not self-imposed conditions. The city is actually imposing these conditions on the development. And the second point is, is that, so tomorrow, this, this developer could sell to another developer. And, and that next developer is stuck with the conditions that the city imposes. And that developer can raise nexus and rough proportionality issues at the time that that development occurs. And then I would also point out that thi- this also, I mean, I could point out the, the problems with the conditions themselves as well, the vagaries of the conditions. But it also binds the city to be prevented from looking at, for instance, if the southwest portion of the site, whatever that means. If, if that is where the stormwater facility has to be located. And when the, when the application comes in, city staff think that it should go in a different location because of some public facility needs. That limits staff's ability to then look at that and impose a condition that fits what the facilities would otherwise be provided. And so i- if there's a recommend, if council wants to impose the conditions, I'd recommend a postponement. If not, then I, I'd recommend that they not be imposed at this point in time because of the legal issues related to it.
Other questions from council? All right. So at this point, I'm kind of reluctant to close the hearing, to be honest. What Sean told us. I'll just put it out there. I'd like to, I'd entertain a motion for a continuous with date certain so that staff are primarily Sean to look into this. Will someone make that motion?
They're moved.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to post to continue this hearing to a date certain. Do we supply that date certain now, Sean, or is that we vote for?
Yeah, it would be nice. It, it looks like Mr. Dukas has a, has a question or, or a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mimi.
If, if, if the condition issue is going to slow us down, our client would rather get an approval this evening without the conditions.
Okay.
Or a decision without the conditions.
All right. So with that, will the motions that can be withdrawn? For the continuance? Valerie and Bridget?
Well, I'd like to continue because I think the conditions are an important part of the conversation. And I think that it came to a place for a certain reason. And I think, I think just doing some research, I think doing it right is going to move it faster than doing some things that are just gonna get appeals and slow down in the long run. So I still think it's a good idea to get something that fits the original intention of, of the conditions, the conversation between the Lucchini's and Lamar, Lennar. And I wish it was different as far as the timing goes, but I feel like we've been through these before and it's better to make the decisions in the way that works instead of doing back and forth. That's my thought.
Okay, so go back to Sean. I guess this is discussion on the motions. So if the applicant is, has asked to drop the conditions, then this could proceed and all we're voting on is this, the plain P T A and P M A tonight, right? With, with the discussion of conditions set aside and to be addressed at another time, primarily ideally at application and development.
That, that's correct. So, so these conditions, if they're appropriate for the time of development, could be imposed at that point in time. So that would be at the subdivision or if there's another application that comes in. You know, land use application that would be appropriate, staff can impose similar or the same conditions if they're appropriate. And others could request that those conditions be imposed at that point in time.
So maybe you're saying that you'd rather have the application proceed and you're willing to withdraw the conditions and just stick to the plain P T A and P M A?
Correct.
Right. So does that satisfy Council Brooks and Pratt? They're asking to proceed without the conditions that the P T A and P M A would be. We'll go into discussions on the P T and P M A and the conditional items will not be part of the request.
So if we, we go forward, how can we get these conditions to apply at a future date?
On that, when they apply for development.
Then I'm fine with that.
But you, you got the motion, you got to have the motions hanging out there.
Can we, can we explain that again? I, I'm, I'm still trying to follow because there's been, we, we voted on somebody's second on putting it on.
Council Reyes, we haven't voted.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I take that back. We didn't vote. We agreed on a, like, you know, because you were hesitant to move forward and you wanted to have more conversations. And then there was a motion, it was passed. And now we are.
This passed.
It was a pass? I thought I heard second. Sorry. There was a motion, there was a second. Sorry. And so I'm wondering, okay, can you repeat what, what's, what, what are we doing now? Because I'm, I'm now, I'm totally confused what's.
So the applicant is asked to move forward with the application without the conditions because they do not want a continuance. They rather see you voted on tonight. And the issue is that if the conditions are there, that our city attorney feels that we might need a continuance because we need to look into the legalities of those conditions.
Right.
So now the applicant has asked for us to proceed and go into deliberations for me to close the hearing and begin deliberations with no conditions on this P T A and P M A.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion.
Second.
All right.
And then I'm curious if we hear also from Lucchini's about.
About?
If, about this particular piece, if that satisfies?
Sure. I mean, they're, they're part of the process.
Yeah. So I just, I mean, the intention is here to do this. It's just a point in time that works for. I still think that there's a conversation around around where, what these conditions are aiming to do and how, how we can do that, but do it in a way that's also right for the city. So I don't know enough about these things to know what the answer is, but I feel like there's a hanging Chad.
All right. So John? Any comments?
Well, I guess we're disappointed. We, we, as I mentioned before, I think we're very appreciative of the efforts that both Lennar and A K S have made to try to satisfy our concerns. Yeah, I mean, there's safety concerns for us and possibly other areas. So I'm not sure how to put this, but we've been through a couple of these little events where we live and in the development of Bassal Creek. And quite frankly, we have run into issues where, oh yeah, we'll take care of that down the road. And down the road comes and guess what? Right back in the same mess we're in today, spending money on our part and extremely, a huge amount of time on mostly Grace's part to try to assure that our property is going to be protected. And we won't get dumped on down the road because somebody at the sea decides, oh, that pond doesn't belong there, belongs somewhere else. And let's keep using the Lucchini's ditch as a way to get rid of some of the stormwater. So that's why we've been so passionate, I guess, about trying to get this nailed down now. It's been going on forever.
Oh, yeah. I totally understand what you're saying. It's just from my viewpoint, yeah, I want you protected also. I don't want your property damaged. But I also got to protect the city from legal exposure in the event that this is done wrong. And my hope is that Lennar and S K A and all the folks developing, you know, if, when we move forward here, if those conditions aren't part of the P T A and P M A, that those are noted and I'm sure you and Grace will make sure they're included in their application for development at the time when they want to build those subdivisions. I know you'll be there and I know staff is going to be keenly aware, they're going to have in their records of all the things you wanted as, you know, part of this condition.
And all of this will be in the public record for this decision. So it's all documented. We can go back to it and point to it and show it as evidence of, of why the subdivision needs to be the way it is. And Lennar is committed to what we've said in, in the A K S letter. A K S is committed to what's in our letter. I know personal assurances haven't felt like they've gotten over the finish line, but we do want to reiterate, we, we are making that commitment. Both, both our organizations are making that commitment.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I guess, just as a comment was mentioned earlier about public involvement. I think if we would have had a little more transparency around what was possible to maybe protect or do something with that stormwater a little sooner or in some earlier conversations we've tried to have, it wouldn't have all backed up here at the last moment. Anyway, thank you and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Sure, John. Council Pratt?
Is there a way that we can give tonight specific direction to staff to look back to these conditions at the point when the application for development is put in and consider them? So we're giving a little more insurance to the Lucchini's? Or does that not make a difference?
Sean has been muted, so.
Yeah. So the, the code dictates what the development has to do. And one of them is to, to mitigate the impacts that they have with respect to stormwater. They will, and Kim could speak to this much greater than I can, but they will have to detain on site. And, and they're, they're not allowed to just discharge into, you know, the Lucchini's site. That there is, all of that will be reviewed at the time, you know, including the systems that they discharged. All of that will be reviewed at the time, you know, including the systems that they discharge to. Will be reviewed as part of their application for actual development. And why that's important is because it's based on impervious surface area. So smaller development has smaller impacts. Greater development will have greater impacts. And so that that's why it's looked at at that point in time.
Alright, thank you.
Council Brooks.
And I have a question to follow up Sean, just to be clear. When they're talking about the previous stormwater drainage issues. Those that was not through our city, right?
Uh, that that's my understanding is it was not through the city. I I would defer to the Lucchini's on what exactly the the issue is.
Okay.
We provided a consultant's report on that to the city at least five times. And we'd be glad to tell you about it. It's occurred right after the Southwest Bloomsbury Road Improvement Project. Completed, we had spoken with the county staff on many times before that was developed. And we were assured that the stormwater was going to be decreased by 10% by their project. And we were flooded after it was completed. So are we are that's the basis of our hesitation. Uh, we. Have some concerns as to. How these things are done and and how we were told on multiple occasions we were going to be safe and we were not.
Okay, so um. So I guess that's the, I mean, it sounds like it wasn't the the city, even though the city was informed. That was managing that. It's very confusing to me because we have the county, we have clean water services, we have the city. And we have a builder. And I don't blame them because I'm sitting here as a council member and I don't, where does the buck stop? And how do we help? Keep this from being a pattern? That's my question tonight for council as I'm considering this.
Get the question through me for staff, Council Brooks, because we're not in deliberations yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. I guess just if there's any any answers for staff on that on my query, that would be. I know it's general, but.
I think Sean, you you laid it out pretty well. I think that there's different phases in the process and I think that. It's clear that a roadway project that really wasn't part of the land use process caused some harm in the past that the city wasn't directly involved in. And I think that certainly the development of the Basalt Creek area is seems plodding and rather slow at times. And you know, particularly this site. Maybe had the zoning been configured this way from the start, we wouldn't even have this kind of intermediary application between. Uh, the development itself, but I think Sean summarized it pretty well in the sense that the development is when. Where the rubber meets the road and where the the buck stops, I think, as you put it. And so there's conditions that come out of that and there's a review of the criteria that apply to it and. It's it's just been a long time, I think, and and we understand that and have heard that and. I mean, similar to AKS, we we can't necessarily commit ourselves to doing something that is unknown for the future, but I think that. The the council, I hope, has noticed that, you know, the staff has been consistent throughout this project and that we've been. Seeing the comments and understanding them and and are, you know, looking forward to applying them in the appropriate time.
Thank you for that. And I just want to say too that. I think being closer by, we understand to the topography there is unusual and I just want to say that out loud and. When people are building in that area and Lamar's building in that area, it's good that they've been down there. To and seeing the topography because it is. You can see why it was unincorporated Washington County.
You had your hand up?
I'm sorry, did you talk to me? I just wanted to talk about the our Tuolton Development Code and our engineering standards. Require exactly what. These conditions are talking about. We will require a traffic analysis. And that will set the location of access. And it's in concert with the county because it's their facility, but the city works with them on that one. So we always get a traffic impact analysis unless it's a small development. And then for stormwater. We have to do the detention and water quality. We're mandated to do that through an MOU, the MS four permits. So those things will happen. It's not like you have to remind staff to do it. We do it every day. You can remind us if you'd like to, but. We do this on every project that comes in.
I think that's our Council Sacco's hand up.
Um, I was gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the Plan Map Amendment and Plan Text Amendment. Um, because it. If if it's appropriate to do so at this time.
I second that.
Want to get hold that, you gotta hold it. I got close to hearing first. Alright, so are there any more questions for staff, KLA, Mimi, everybody who's here? Alright, with that, then I'll close the hearing and council will now move into deliberations and now Council Sacco.
Okay, now I can make the motion?
Yes. Well, Council Pratt has her hand up. Whoa, Council Pratt has her hand up.
I have one issue I want to discuss before we go forward, if that's alright. I might have an issue with the 300 feet from the school. I understand this is a particular. Weird flag lot in it. I don't have an issue with this particular property, but if we change it in the text amendment, aren't we changing it for any property in your school?
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, again, so there's no other commercial neighborhood, commercial zoning right now. And so for it to be applied in the future, you, the council, would have to make a decision. On the appropriateness of the location. So it could be a thousand feet away from a school and if you. The council determine that to be not an optimum location for application of the zoning, you could still deny that amendment. And so I think that, you know, Sean, our city attorney and I talked about it is that there's really some. Functionally, some kind of trouble with it remaining in the development code and that if anything. If there is a desire to have something like this, it probably belongs in the comp plan. Anyway, but but again, really, the the process of 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 zoning in the future is really the time to. Make determinations and I I think that to some extent, not having a specific number frees you in either direction to. Make a determination based on the facts we have available at that time.
Counselor Pratt, I I guess I would to directly answer your question, yes. Once you change it for neighborhood commercial, it changes it, but this is the only neighborhood commercial zone in the city. So.
Okay, I guess like like I'm, I guess my question is rather than. Um, getting rid of this, couldn't you just say 300 feet from the school building? And you'd be meeting the criteria for this property, but. I just don't want, I know we don't have any others now, but I'm just imagining um, like a 7-Eleven to pick on a store with cigarettes and. Alcohol right next door to a school. So and but you're telling me, if I'm understanding correctly, that each time. Since we don't have this zoned right now, if we had future areas that wanted to change to be zoned like this, we would have the choice on each at each time.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so can Kristin make her motion? Alright, Council Sacco, you're up.
Okay, um, so I move to um, to. I move to, do I, we adopt, I'm sorry, adopt the Plan Math Amendment and Plan Text Amendment. Modifying map 10-1 of a Tuolton Comprehensive Plan and Chapter 51 of the Tuolton Development Code.
Right, and Sean, she has also asked for to bring back an ordinance. To implement the decision, correct?
We we will be doing that, yes. So if it's approved tonight, the next step would be for count for staff to bring back an ordinance at the next meeting for council to. Formally adopt this into an ordinance and a written decision.
Does it have to be part of Council Sacco's motion or is that included?
It it is inferred, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Alright, so Council Hillier seconded it. So I have a motion a second to prove the to approve the PTA and PMA. Any discussions on the motion? Alright, so I'll go through the row. Council Hillier.
Though I am concerned about the 300 feet, I vote aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
My picture shifted. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
I vote aye also. It is unanimous. Alright. And right, so moving on. To, I think that was it. Nope, it's not. There we go, one more thing. Uh, General Business, item number one on General Business, consideration of ordinance number 1455-21. And ordinance repealing ordinance number 1453-21. Who's leading up this discussion?
I believe it, Sean, and I asked him if he could add ordinance one more time to the sentence.
Yes, so before you tonight is the ordinance number 1455-21 and as you may recall. The the ordinance that is subject or proposed to be repealed was the ordinance that adopted the city's. Stormwater Master Plan into the Comprehensive Plan. As you heard earlier to tonight, the city is proposing to go forward with adding both Basalt Creek and the Southwest Concept Areas to the Stormwater Master Plan. That was originally going to be a kind of a two-step process. However, there is some opposition from. Some of the residents in Basalt Creek and it just makes more sense and and is kind of more efficient to just keep. That as to, you know, a a complete package that includes the whole of the city's Stormwater Master Plan. So that would be what the work that's already done, plus Basalt Creek and the Southwest Concept Plan. Um, and so that's proposed tonight is a proposal to go ahead and repeal that prior ordinance. And then the city would then move forward and in this this ordinance, it already directs staff, but staff's doing it already. To come back with a final Stormwater Master Plan that encompasses the whole of the city's planning area. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Kristin to Sean. Alright. Council Pratt.
I move that we adopt ordinance number, I can't read it. 1455-21 in ordinance repealing ordinance number 1453-21.
Do we have to do first and second reading on this?
We do, yes.
So go ahead and amend your motion.
I I amend that to mean first reading of ordinance number 1455-21.
Go second.
I have the motion a second for first reading by title only of ordinance number 1455-21. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks. Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
I vote aye also.
Ordinance number 1455-21 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 1453-21.
Oh, you had to make this sentence longer, geez. Do how about to have a motion for second reading?
I motion, we have a second reading of ordinance number 1455-21 by title only.
Second.
I have a motion a second for reading by title own, second reading by title only of ordinance number 1455-21. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
I vote aye also.
Ordinance number 1455-21 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 1453-21.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1455-21.
Second.
I have a motion a second to adopt ordinance 1455-21. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
I vote aye also, unanimous, it is approved. Uh, we had no items removed for consent tonight and that brings us up to any other council communications we can cover during work session. Council Brooks.
I just, I want to mention more towards the public, um, going and listening today to, um, we did a. Uh, workshop on vaccines with the CDC. I think there were about 20 CDC people there. I think in my breakout room, there may have been four or five. And also Dr. Fauci, and I just want to remind people, even if they've gotten their vaccines, it's so important to still. Socially distance, wash your hands, wear masks. Um, one of the outcomes from these variants is that herd immunity has already gone up. Five to 10%, so instead of needing 60 to 70% people vaccinated, we now need. 70 to 85% estimated. These kind of variants happen when people don't do those things. There was a lot of headlines today without a lot of guidance around getting your vaccines and then being able to socialize. However. If you look at the small print. It's with one other family member in at a home. So it's like if you have a daughter and a granddaughter and you've been vaccinated at your home. So those kind of examples, so just being really careful. And knowing we're really close, it's kind of like a marathon, we're close to the finish line. But if we do these things, everything can open up in a better way, a healthier way for everybody. So I just want to. Share that news because it was a lot to learn today. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, do I have a motion, a motion for adjournment?
I want to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Maria.
I just want to thank, we were at the, we do, uh, Council Pratt and Brooks. And I do a lot of the interviews to the city and I just want to let everyone know that. I want to thank them. I I can't believe how many people are actually out there to wanting to volunteer and support and. They, I'm always amazed about how about how many years they've been around in in Tuolton or serving in this committee committees. So. I just want to say thank you and if you are not picked or something, you know. You know, didn't work out, just just keep going to our website, keep looking for other ways of volunteering and getting engaged. I. I think there's a lot of that, especially. Um, if you're if you're feeling lonely at home or something, there's always something to do and there's always people out there in these kinds of forums. So um, just want to thank you for your your time for filling out the application, coming to the interviews. And um, I just, um, I'm just, I just always feel proud of our community. So thank you very much for that.
And Council Reyes. Anything else? Double check my screen here. Alright. Uh, how about, do I have a motion for adjournment for this evening?
They're moved.
Alright, all those in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.